Thanks for coming. It was a pretty good turnout. We think maybe more of a show up. What we've got going tonight is a slide presentation. I'm going to give you the work that we've done for the last 11 meetings since November. I think it's our first meeting. Just a brief thing on how this has evolved. The Alaska Courts basically told us we had to, if we wanted our minor offenses to be enforced in the court system, had to develop a format for that and get their listing with them. So the borough and the attorneys and the court system worked for quite a while to come up with an ordinance that would fit our needs or a particular situation. And they put that, introduced it back in June of 2015 for the first time. And so we had several meetings on that. At one point, we had voted to move it forward and reconsidered that and referred it to a minor ordinance, a Ad hoc committee that was created back then in November, late October. So this committee's been working for, since then, pretty much on defining that, taking public comments, public comments from various committees too. The work was delegated out to different boards and commissions. And so what we have tonight to show you and kind of go through is kind of what we've come up with so far. And we're hoping to kind of wrap this up in the next, within the next month, probably get it to the Assembly again. And then we'll go through the public hearing process again. I think we've made a lot of adjustments that kind of make it flow a lot nicer and be better for the community. And we've had several contributors in our meetings throughout the time. Brendan and Paul have both attended, I think, just about every meeting. He's given us input. So what we're going to do then is Mike and Margaret will go through a PowerPoint here, maybe 15 minutes or 20 minutes. And at the end, we've got to take a lot of questions and comments. And if we get enough things that we're still going to work on, we'll probably have another meeting to do with this. We may need one anyway. A few things and things that are still pending. So let's see, anything else? Just who's on the Minor Defense Committee is Mike Nicker, Margaret Greenar, Mike Case, Deb Vogt, Bill Thomas, and Don Turner, who are both out of town right now, and myself. And let's see, anything else? I think that's it. So Mike, you want to start then?
Sure. Thanks, Ron. And additionally, we have members of the Assembly and the Mayor here tonight. So we have, this is great, because we have Diana and Jan. We also have manager Brad Ryan here tonight. So I think this is a good group of folks. And like Ron said, we've got some good committee comments from the public throughout the whole process. So that's been, and the interim chief is here, so this is great. So we've got some good representation across the board. So what we're going to do here, we're just going to go through and provide everybody with information on the whole ordinance and the process, and some of the specific recommendations, and some things that we may still have out there that we need to kind of finalize. So if you have, we were going to bring pieces of paper and pencil, but of course we didn't. But if you have a question, please try to retain those questions. We'll go through the presentation first, and then afterwards, we can go through a discussion of some questions you might have. So kind of first question is, you know, why are we here? And like as Ron said, the committee was formed by the Assembly and the Mayor in response to a citizen petition regarding the minor offenses ordinance. And it was tasked with developing recommendations on the ordinance for presentation back to the Assembly. And our deadline is this month. We're hoping to get through it in time to meet the deadline for the Assembly, so that they can have more information as per their request. So the citizen, the Mayor and the Assembly were informed that we're seeing responses to the petition and tasked with reviewing the ordinance and developing recommendations. I'd like to briefly go over the process of how the committee did its work. This document is a volume of information. So what the committee attempted to do is objectively review as much information as possible in the limited time we had available. As Ron said, we have four or five months, and it seems like a long time, but the volume of information, as the Assembly is well aware, Assembly members and the Mayor, is a lot of information. And included in that, we had Assembly and Administration comments and concerns. We had public comments and concerns stemming from the petition. We had information from the Borough Attorney. We had recommendations from Borough Committees, such as the GASS, the TAB, the Port Harmon Advisory Committee, the Park Committee, the Land Commission, and the Public Safety Commission. And we had information and recommendations from sources such as the Police Department, the Fire Department, and animal and control officials. So quickly, I'll go over a little bit of the information from each of these sources. So it's a wide variety of information we received. We'll start out with the Administration concerns. Some of the concerns in the Administration level was the ability and cost in time and labor to enforce, to cite, and to adjudicate violations of the code. So that had been factored in. Also, concerns are to enforce the codes and the statutes of higher law, which is the ability to protect lives, health, and safety of the public and government employees, and the ability to protect public and private property. That's kind of government's mandate. So that's part of the Administration concerns. Some of the public concerns that we received were enforcement and citation authority, training and certification of officials issuing citations, the duplication of violations for single offenses, daily compounding of fines, the ability to remedy alleged violations prior to the issuance of a citation. So that's like a warning instead of an actual citation. And issues surrounding the interpretation, given certain wording and grammar choices within the ordinance itself as we first received it. And then also issues that were surrounding the idea of policing for profit. That was one of the big issues that came up through the petitioning process. And then the committee concerns. This is from a Borough Committee, these are like the Government Affairs and Services Committee, and Park, and Drac, and all these committees. We considered it on our part imperative to consider the recommendations from committees, because they've done, some of the committees have done a tremendous amount of work on the issue already. So it was part, we felt it important that we tried to embrace and capture and align our recommendations as much as possible with the committees that have already done a lot of work on it. Some of these recommendations included the substance of individual violations, so what those individual violations were, what the fine structure of those violations were, the enforcement authority within their realm of knowledge, and the authority to issue citations, and the ability to efficiently and equitably enforce and adjudicate violations of code locally to retain our local autonomy. So those are some of the ideas from committees that were brought out there. So we had to incorporate those into our information. And then there was additional information that the committee considered. We received some guidance by legal experts, such as the Borough Attorney, and I would add, Committee Member Deb Vogt, who is an attorney and was extremely helpful throughout the process, and I'll go into a little bit later. And also, we received information and assistance from the Borough Manager and various department heads within the Borough who all assisted the committee. After a view of all that information, we have attempted now to consider all that information and develop recommendations for the Assembly. The process is ongoing, and information received from this town hall meeting tonight, so if you have questions, some of this information may still be included in the recommendations that we present to the Assembly. And we'll start going into some of the recommendations. And the first one I'd like to go into is, was there a need for the minor offenses ordinance? First off, the committee believes there is a place in the Haynesborough for the minor offenses ordinance. We realize that law enforcement can be difficult in a small town. When a small town issues, and the fact that we can't be all anonymous, it makes those small town issues of enforcement of code sometimes a little bit problematic or challenging, to say the least. So we believe the minor offenses ordinance can assist the community in equitable enforcement of our local laws. The committee also believes the ordinance can assist the community in protecting individual rights. That is, that aspect of the minor offenses ordinance came to fruition through the petition process and has remained with the committee throughout the entire process. And we've attempted to capture those concerns and incorporate them into our recommendations to the Assembly. And the other thing, we believe that the need for minor offenses ordinance can protect those who serve our community to enforce our laws and protect the borough from unnecessary We've had instances in the past where problematic situations have come up, and we believe the minor offenses ordinance, if utilized properly and with the proper structure and substance and oversight, we believe those can be alleviated or at least minimized. To be the right fit for the community, one of the single most important recommendations is the inclusion of a purpose and intent section in the document. The committee felt it important the ordinance contained language that clearly states the intent of the overall ordinance. And this clarification is going to be important for future interpretation of the provisions within the ordinance. The committee also felt it was important to address the common concerns within the purpose and intent, shared by the borough, the public, and the various Borough Committees who have weighed in on the ordinance. So we wanted to capture all of this into a purpose and intent. And with these goals in mind, the committee drafted a clear statement of purpose and The opening statement of the purpose and intent is directed to those provisions of the ordinance that list individual fines. It states clearly that the protection of life, health, and safety of both, and I consider this important, of both the public and government employees is imperative. So we want to make sure that government employees, because we have had instances in our past in this community where enforcement of our local laws can be problematic or difficult for government employees. So that has to be part of our overall mission. So in essence, this section of the purpose and intent is designed to highlight the purpose of the individual fines within the minor offenses ordinance. The next statement continues to clarify the purpose of individual fines within the ordinance. As we all know, government is instituted to protect public lives, health, and safety, but also a big part of government is to protect public and private property. So that's an integral part of the purpose and intent. And the final statement in this sentence for the purpose and intent is then directed to the provisions of the ordinance outside of the individual fines. This is directed at the general provisions, including those regulating enforcement and the citing of violations. It is also intended to embrace the local autonomy provisions within the local ordinance for general public rights. So this section is designed to look outside of the individual fines, outside of the individual structure and substance of the fines, and hit at the meat of how we enforce ourselves. And this is our governing purpose and intent that we feel is important to be included. Now, we had other concerns from the public through the petitioning process, specifically the idea of policing for profit. We had to recognize those concerns from the public, and we had to somehow put into our document recognizing and acknowledging that fear within the community and to alleviate that fear. So we just include a statement directed toward the fear of using financial motives to enforce the provisions within the ordinance. This statement is designed to ensure that local enforcement is directed towards compliance and not the generation of revenue for the borough. So this is the whole, this idea of compliance comes in later. We've heard this over and over at our meetings, compliance, not enforcement. That's what we want to do, is have a code where compliance is the goal, not enforcement. And that's an important thing. So this kind of works towards that goal. So the overall purpose and intent reads as it is on the screen there, and it will be recommended to frame the provisions of the ordinance. The committee may also recommend this statement be included into the general provisions of individual chapters within the ordinance to highlight the statement's importance within a specific chapter. There are specific chapters where it's been mentioned that this is maybe an important statement to make at the outset of that chapter within the ordinance. Some minor tweaking of the language may occur in that final sentence, but the effect is going to remain the same. There was some, it's a passive sentence, so we may want to make it more of an active sentence, but the intent is the same, that there shall be no revenue generation used as a motive to enforce. Another significant recommendation will be directed towards the authority to write or issue citations. It's been a recurring theme throughout the process. The committee will be recommending that only police officers be provided the opportunity to issue, or the authority, not the opportunity, the authority to issue citations. This change is designed to ensure that the issuance of citations will be handled only by trained law enforcement personnel. This recommendation is designed to protect the public's rights and to ensure those issuing citations are also protected properly. Now, there is one exception to the authority to issue and write citations, and that is the harbor. The committee will recommend the harbor master or the assistant harbor master may write citations to enforce harbor provisions, only harbor provisions, not general provisions of other chapters, but to enforce harbor provisions under the ordinance. This recommendation, the committee's aligned this recommendation with the Port Harbor Advisory Committee's recommendation regarding Title 16 enforcement. Now, it must be noted here, however, this recommendation still allows for harbor staff to call on our local police department personnel to assist them with enforcement of the harbor provisions. So if they see the need, they can always call up the guys at the police department to help them enforce the harbor provisions. I'm sorry? And Margaret?
Yeah, no, one note with this is, this is a recommendation from the committee that harbor personnel be allowed to issue citations, but it is also already entitled 16. They just don't have the mechanism to do so yet because of the minor ordinance work that is happening. But the harbor and assistant harbor master already have that authority under the harbor, and we're just recommending that that remain the same with something additional.
Absolutely. Yeah, thanks. Good point. Now, there needs to be one distinction drawn here between enforcement authority versus the authority to issue citations. Enforcement authority allows for the managers, certain members of the staff or departments, such as the Fire Department, to be involved in the enforcement process of the ordinance. However, enforcement is not the same as citing violations. The committee will recommend that while the manager and certain members of the staff or certain departments may still be involved in the enforcement process, only trained police officers will be granted authority to write citations under the ordinance, with the one exception being the harbor.
And this came up again in public during the Assembly meetings when volunteer, members of the, volunteer members of the Fire Department and ambulance crew said, well, it wouldn't be ambulance crew, but members of the Fire Department said, you know, they're entrusted to go into people's homes and assist people. They don't want to become, they want to allow, they want to have the knowledge to say, maybe you need to do this or that, and that's against fire code, but they don't want to, it was a matter of trust, whether they should actually issue citations for things that they saw or if they called upon the police to do that. And this kind of addresses the concerns of the volunteers with their part as well.
Absolutely. The volunteers did express that concern a couple of times through public comments that that was a concern for them.
What about Title 18?
It's an exception. Yeah. And because the committee is recommending the harbor master and assistant harbor master be provided authority to issue citations as it currently is in the code, the committee also intends to make recommendations that a proper training and certification process be provided for these persons. Training and certification for the harbor master and assistant harbor master are essential to aligning this recommendation with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. And as such, the committee has requested the manager, the police chief, and the harbor master draft language for training and certification provisions. And the substance of this training and certification of these provisions are a work in progress at this point. So this is one of the items Ron indicated that there is some unfinished business to attend to. And this is, this is a matter of concern not only for the committee, but it's also been a matter of concern for the public throughout the whole process. It's not just been one or two meetings, it's been a recurring thing, and the committee recognizes that, and it is the intent to make recommendations, but it's a work in progress to make sure those recommendations are correct, correctly reflect what we're trying to do. Now, I said it once, and here we kind of have it, the emphasis on compliance, not enforcement. And this is going to be kind of a recommendation throughout some of our specific recommendations, emphasis on compliance and not strict enforcement. This allows officers in those in the enforcement process discretion within the bounds of the purpose and intent. It grants authority for issuing warnings instead of citations for first offenses. And this emphasizes compliance of the law and not just strict enforcement. And we've had, this has been another thing recurring throughout the committee process. And we've had the public, the interim chief, we've got discussions about this at multiple meetings. And so this is a concern for a variety of interests in this process. The committee has also included recommended language that requires a record of all fines imposed, along with the dollar amounts collected, be retained by the clerk's office. This information shall be provided to the Public Safety Commission or the Borough Assembly upon request. And this provision is a key element to providing transparency and oversight for the overall enforcement of the ordinance. And that transparency and oversight are key elements to aligning with the purpose and intent. The idea here is to be able to track enforcement and to ensure that we, as a community, aren't over enforcing, or if we are in one area, like let's say, I always bring up dog pooping. Let's say all of a sudden, we have a bunch of tickets written for dog pooping. Well, we might have a dog pooping problem in the town. So the idea here is so that those records can be delivered to the Public Safety Commission or the Assembly, and then maybe funds that are collected can be directed towards the problem. The whole point is using the funds to direct them to problems that we have in the community, and let's try to solve those problems. Maybe we need more pooping stations with pooping bags. We have bicycles which has come up. If we have bicycles running stop signs, maybe we need an education campaign if we start citing, we can throw some of those funds towards. This is a way that the Assembly and the Public Safety Commission can track those funds and maybe isolate those funds for solving problems within the community. The committee will also recommend changes in the wording of certain sections of the ordinance that were viewed by some members of the public as harsh or problematic. The committee has requested the attorney to remove references to guilty, conviction, and punishable from the text and replace with language such as commensal, minor offense. And that's, that was one of the things that came through the whole process in the petition. It was a lot of language that the public, through the petition, saw, they were trigger words. And so, and so the Assembly felt it important that, hey, let's see if we can't do something with that. So we have the attorney to take a look at it. We think we've softened the language a lot to make it more user-friendly, where it doesn't stare at you when you look at their ordinance. And with the assistance of Committee Member Deb Vogt, the committee was fortunate to have a legal second opinion on the technical details of the legal structure of the ordinance. This included recommendations such as legal wording and grammar, recommendations on the numbering of sections and chapters after edits to the wording of the provisions, and the implications of wording and grammar choice on future interpretation of the provisions in question. Now, even if, I think the Mayor and the Assembly persons in the audience will appreciate this, having Deb re-vote on the committee has been a blessing. I don't pay the borough's legal fees, but having Deb there to offer a legal second opinion was very, was very helpful. And I think...
You're supposed to pay Deb what you pay for.
Yeah. So she was basically valuable to the process. And so, a lot of small recommendations that aren't being highlighted here were made through Deb's combing through the provisions and finding words that were problematic, that possibly the attorney maybe has made a mistake, or somehow little things that needed to be changed. So Deb was instrumental in a lot of small recommendations that are not being highlighted here. So thank you, Deb. Now, those are some of the, overview of some of the provisions. A lot of those are happening in, these first recommendations were in Chapter 1, some of them bleed over into the individual chapters. So now I'd like to go into some chapter-specific recommendations, so some recommendations specific to some of the violations or the chapters themselves. We'll start with Chapter 2 on this. Chapter 2 deals with public employees and elected officials. It actually is not, if anybody's seen the ordinance, you've seen the big table with the table of all the offenses. But Chapter 2 isn't listed as a table, it's provisions in paragraph, in kind of a code form. So that's, it's spread out at the start. This deals with financial disclosure, unlawful conduct, inactivity, and prohibited conduct by Assembly or by elected officials, public officials, anyone. The committee is recommending that we have no major changes to this chapter, other than those already mentioned. So we go through each chapter, this is one of the chapters, there's been no major changes on the committee's part. The major changes for Chapter 2 will be the umbrella provisions that were changed in Chapter 1, some of the things that we discussed earlier. Chapter 3, this covers items such as collection and preventance of sales taxes, as well as obtaining a business license. Here again, the committee is recommending no major changes, other than those previously stated. Chapter 5, this addresses commercial businesses and tours. The committee is going to honor, this is one of the, this is one of the recommendations we're going to make. to honor, this is one of the, this is one of the recommendations we're going to make to adopt the recommendations of a, of a board, the tourism advisory board. They put in a lot of work on the provisions in this chapter. It's title five, but it will be chapter five within minor offenses. And we are going to recommend that we adopt all of the TAF's recommendations. I think, I believe Diane, you're on, you're on this, right?
I'm going to agree on that.
Yeah. So you guys have put a lot of work in on this one. And so this is, and so this is one of those ones, we, we acknowledge the work they've put into it and we're going to align our recommendations with that committee. Chapter six, now this addresses animal control. For animal control, we, we reached out to staff at HART for their recommendations on the specific violations. And they did have a few recommendations for us. This is, specifically there were some, that were kind of hot button issues here that had different structure of fines for altered versus unaltered dogs. So, and HART came back with some recommendations on that. The committee intends to honor these recommendations, but we still have some work remaining here. As, as I was putting this together, I was trying to find the actual recommendations for the motions and I was, I was a little, I was lacking finding those. So the committee, I think, needs a little bit of discussion. And this is one of those ones that Ron spoke of that may need a little bit more work, just to make sure we capture everything. Chapter eight, now chapter eight covers, if anybody knows Title 18, chapter eight covers an extensive, extensive range of violations. These include littering, public nuisances, hazards, firework, and smoking laws. The committee, and we discussed this at the last meeting, and because of the vague, some of the vague terminology and the vast territory covered by this chapter, the inclusion of a definition section is warranted here. The committee feels that we made a recommendation that we put a definition section within this chapter. And due to the extensive ground covered by this chapter and the potential contentiousness of some of the provisions, some of the provisions have elicited some contentiousness from the public. So more work on this chapter may be required. So there's some, and we'll discuss some of that in the unfinished business further with the, with the definitions. Chapter nine, this is alcohol perjury and public safety infractions. And there may, the committee saw assistance from the police department for possible duplication of state law on some of these provisions. However, at this time, the committee has made no recommendations on, on this chapter other than those mentioned previously. Chapter 10, now chapter 10 covers all the traffic related offenses, including pedestrian, skiing, skateboarding, and bicycling and ATV offenses. Chapter 10 is a large part and a driving force behind the minor offenses ordinance, not just here, but on a statewide basis. This is kind of one of the ones that has precipitated minor offenses going forward at a state level. Initially, we had recommendations from the interim police chief to remove chapter 10 from the minor offenses ordinance and administer enforcement locally. However, at the next meeting, at our next meeting, the interim chief reconsidered his recommendation and advised, advised us to retain chapter 10 in the minor offenses ordinance. And so the intent of the committee appears to be in line with this advice to retain it within the ordinance. This is one of those ones that we may need to just clarify, but the intent of the committee is to leave it in this, but it's clear through the discussion that they, through the committee's word. Overall thus, the committee is going to align itself with the substance and fine structure as set out in state law. So a lot of these provisions are, are provided in state law. And we can go, we can go over this a little bit later. There's some variations within state laws versus borough laws, but we're going to align ourselves with state law. That's what we're going to recommend here at this law. Now, the committee did respond to a citizen petition requesting removal of skiing from the provisions within chapter 10. After discussion at the meeting and with input from the public and from the interim police chief, the committee's intent is to recommend that skiing be regulated according to the laws of the state governing pedestrian activity on roadways. So basically, the, the petition asked for skiing to be removed. However, the committee felt that skiing should be regulated just as pedestrian. So what it does, it allows that activity within the bounds of pedestrian activity on roadways. So what pedestrian can do, a skier can do. And so the same kind of, same kind of government of the activity. We'll go up to chapter 12 next. This, there's a few construction related and park related, it's, it's rather small listed violations. The committee is going to recommend that the fine, the only one here, the fine for failure to install a house number be dropped from a hundred dollars down to fifty dollars in chapter 12. And as we all know, this is one of the ones, if we drive around, my job is part of taking orders with house numbers, not a lot of house numbers. So I think with the whole idea of compliance rather than enforcement, we can, we can, we can elevate this one up. And I don't know that we need to enforce it too much, but we recommend dropping the fine down. Other than that, there's no major changes within chapter 12. On chapter 13, this addresses things like tampering of fire hydrants, opening of fire hydrants, or failure to connect to a sewer system. And here again, the committee is not going to make any major changes or recommendations other than the overarching ones that, that the umbrella was, that was discussed earlier. Chapter 14, this deals with the, with timber and the firewood damage infractions. Once again, no major changes to this section. And on to 15, this covers fire and fire related infractions. The committee has made no major changes to this chapter. So we're going to just keep it the way it is. The one, we did reach out to the fire department for the clarification on enforcement because of the public comment we received with regard to the enforcement. Actually, we received recommendations and we believe that the clarification between enforcement and issuing of citations alleviates their concerns based on their recommendations or their, their input. Chapter 16, this governs ports and harbors. Once again, this is one of the committees that spent a lot of time, and I think Norm Hughes, the chairman of the committee is here, he can probably follow this in a little bit better, but they spent a lot of time on the recommendations within title 16. So we are going to align ourselves with the recommendations of the port and harbor advisory committee and the considerable time that the PHAC has invested in revising the specific provisions. Recall that this is the one exception to police officers issuing citations. Once again, once again, the committee will recommend the harbor master and assistant harbor master may issue citations given the proper training and certification in a process that has yet to be finalized. Finally, on to chapter 18, this covers planning and zoning. Once again, this is one of the committees, the commission, planning and zoning, the planning commission, they've done a tremendous amount of work with their, with Title 18 in the current code. And so the committee agrees with the planning commission that the current provisions entitled 18 ensure compliance. That was one of the final statements in their recommendations to the Assembly, that they believe what is, what is out there right now ensures compliance. And that was one of the, the compliance over enforcement. So therefore, the committee is recommending that chapter 18 be dropped from the minor offenses ordinance and be handled through local administration to current provisions entitled 18 as it is currently enforced. So basically, keep it local, local administration as we currently, currently have it. We're aligning ourselves with planning commission there. What's that? Yeah. And there's still, there's a little bit of unfinished business where some work remains. And so one of the, one of the areas where more work may be warranted is the provisions granting both criminal and civil action for a single offense. There's a couple provisions that issue criminal and allows for civil actions for a single offense at the same time a criminal action is imposed. Some discussion has taken place on this concept. However, further consideration by the committee may be warranted given the discussion and public input at recent meetings. So this is one of those items that we need to possibly take a look, another look at. Additionally, the definition of certain terms within chapter eight need to be addressed. Specifically, some items like defining what a public nuisance versus a private nuisance is. There's some provisions and violations that we need to define what, what a state of disrepair is. It's kind of a vague term. We might need to develop a definition in there for that. And there's one provision that I, I like, what does it mean to annoy the comfort of another person? So, you know, we've got to, we've got to take a look at some of that. And it might be something that we need to remove some wording or, or somehow define that. Seems like we could give a little in research. And then finally, the appropriateness of separable offenses clauses within the ordinance may need further consideration given the discussion at recent meetings. This provision states, quote, "Each act of violation and every day upon which the violation shall occur will constitute a separable offense," unquote. Now, within some chapters, this authority has been identified as problematic. Thus, more consideration by the committee is warranted. And this, some of the, some of the items in, in chapter eight, that expansive list and wider array, some of, in, in chapter eight, it says separable offenses by day. Some of those provisions don't meet a daily fine provision. We, possibly, we need to discuss that. So that needs to be looked at further. So anyway, thank you for your time. I went over a little bit more than I did. The people on the committee know I'm a little wary of time, so I appreciate their time with us. But thank you for attending. And if we can turn it over for discussion and Ron for further-
Thanks, Mike. What, Deborah?
I just might add that on the fine structure, the attorney changed and we followed, I think. The change from first offenses to second offenses, those two offenses, just that to second offense or every time, so the police officer doesn't have to look up and see if someone's been cited before.
So what we're thinking, oh, go ahead, Mike.
Well, I just want to point out that I don't think there's an exception to this, but there are no new offenses in this, in this ordinance. It's just a different manner of handling offenses that are already on the books.
So we're kind of thinking, we didn't know the size of the crowd or anything, but we're thinking maybe the panel or committee was set up here, but it looks like we're small enough to just talk about questions and answers from where we're at. So how about some, some of your questions? Ben?
I have a question. On Title 8, you have definitions that you're going to take into consideration. How are you going to handle subjective definitions? As Mike pointed out, what annoys Carol may not annoy me, but how do you put that in a generalized form in order to have it in mind?
Yeah. Some of those are so hard to deal with specifically.
So they're not subjective or?
Well, never had an answer to that the other days.
It's not really an answer, but the law has used the term reasonable man, now reasonable person, for, you know, since kind of memorial. And there is a whole body of law around what constitutes a reasonable, it's an action that a person of, I became to say, of reasonable sensitivities and so on would take in similar circumstances. I mean, it's, it's hard to define it, but it has been defined, used for the reasonable part of an issue, reasonable reason. And so it's not something that just is in the eye of the person writing the citation.
Just to expound, like, just a little bit of, so then it would fall back into the, the enforcement person to exercise a one way or two discretion. To the ticket writer, I mean, you know, to the police officer.
Yeah.
Enforcement and whatever.
Oh, compliance.
And compliance. So it would go back to compliance.
Yeah. And I think the interim chief was at a few of our meetings and, and he, yeah, he's, and you know, that's their intent, his compliance, you know, and-
Yeah.
And so, and that's, so that's where we want to kind of work towards if we were in, and how to do that with wording, yes, compliance over enforcement. So Norm, you had your hand in it. Margaret?
Chapter five, dealing with business licenses, and paying of taxes, borough taxes collected. So if you're in violation of borough tax code, a police officer has to issue a ticket, the borough staff cannot deal with you on that. Like if I don't turn in my quarterly business tax return, under this proposed ordinance, it's listed, I don't know what to spare it off, I'm not telling you right now, but it says, you know, police officer would get issued that, a ticket for that. And that used to be the borough staff's job. Is that how this, I'm reading ordinance correct, the borough staff will no longer be enforcing borough code with fines? Margaret?
Well, I think that's where the enforcement comes in. So borough staff can still enforce and say, hey, Norm, you haven't paid your taxes. And since we're suggesting and hoping, and we put the wording in there about issue warnings for the first offense and things like that, it would be the borough staff, or it would be the fire chief, or it would be the people with the knowledge of, of the offense who may contact you and say, you haven't filed your taxes. Can you file your taxes, Norm? You know, and then if you're, if you refuse to comply, then yes, the borough staff contacts the police department to issue a formal citation.
And they issue a citation based on borough staff's recommendation?
Yeah. It's a citation that's the piece of paper that's the formal, that only a police officer should be able to pen, right? Because a police officer is the dream in how to write the citation, what constitutes writing the citation. And they can use the information from the borough staff for that individual offense.
So they have to open a case to file a ticket against someone who's not complying with sales tax? I'm just trying to understand this extra loophole we got to jump through. The police officer has to justify him writing you a citation? They just don't call and say, hey, write this guy a citation? He has to do his due diligence, otherwise he's just a ticket writer.
Yes. Because if, if you, if you dispute the ticket then, if you dispute the ticket, which is something we didn't touch on here. But if you dispute the ticket, your recourse to disputing any citation is to say, okay, I'm going to dispute this, which means it goes to the magistrate. The police officer has to show up at the magistrate and talk about why they issued the citation. And in a magistrate in a courtroom with that kind of situation, it's, I don't know if the word is clear, but in talking with the interim chief and talking with the attorneys and talking with the public, if you have the magistrate process working when you're disputing it and you have the police officer in there who's, who's taken an open course and taken the training to write the citation, it all functions on a better level of protecting rights, basically. Does that make sense?
The police officer doesn't know anything about tax law though.
Well, maybe-
That's, that's my point. I'm just saying, the borough staff's, they, they're not removed from the process. They will be there, they'll have to be called to court. I just seems-
I hear what you're saying.
It just seems kind of sad to have someone write you a ticket who doesn't know what the situation is. Based on the other person's recommendation that's not certified, it's supposed to be trained by the borough and managed by the borough, but they, it doesn't change anything.
Mike?
Yes. Whenever a police officer writes a citation based on an allegation by staff members, that staff person would go to the court, to the police officer. And the magistrate would, would ask the police officer, why do you know that? The police officer would say that somebody, someone had, informed him of the offense. And that's what goes. It wouldn't be just the police officer. The police officer doesn't need any special training, because he'll break the- The police officer doesn't need any special training, because he'll break the first with special training.
Yeah, I imagine in that case, Norm was mentioning, there must be a letter and it's going to be all kinds of documentation that will go along with that.
I just want to ran that scenario, I just want to understand how it works or how we see it work. It may work differently when we get done and it finally gets passed. I'm just trying to understand the scenario with borough staff and police officers, and we do need enforcement of these laws and stuff and tax, and in the past, they just haven't been enforced in a time and a half, so.
And this whole document is going to be a living document that as we go through, a year from now, we may look back and say, some of these things need some more tweaking. Let's make it work more workable, so. Julie?
So, this is a result of eleven meetings from what I understand, is that correct? And the borough attorney has been involved along the way. I was just wondering how much the borough spent in legal fees to the attorneys from the past few months for this?
I don't know if I have a breakdown for just this piece of it. We've had it on conference calls three times now, I think, or maybe an hour piece, and I understand it's like $185 an hour.
Someone gave me the figure between $15,000 and $20,000. Is that not accurate?
That could be, because if you go way back, well, Brad has that number, but this has been going on for three years, so.
So, it's, we did ask for an estimate. We didn't open a separate tracking account with the attorneys when it started. I don't think there was an anticipation it's going to go this long. And, but they gave me a rough estimate about three weeks ago, between $15,000 and $17,000 from start until now. So, it's somewhere in that ballpark. So, not just the last one, but whenever it started.
In the Purpose and Intent section, it said that the ordinance is to protect the lives and health and safety, but yet many of these seem to do with quality of life issues and not really safety or health. Litter is not a safety issue or a health issue, it's a quality of life issue.
And if litter, litter can be, we live in a, it depends on the type of litter, and this goes into, and we've been working through the definitions of public and private nuisances and things like this, what is the definition, but we have a lot of drainage here. Litter, it can become a public health issue if drainage goes through litter and it gets into, into our creeks, like Selmo Creek, it goes right downtown, ends up in the fish, with fish, so. There are some times, maybe, might be correct, but we do have some specifics where litter on private property may be a public health concern.
That's just an example of...
Yeah, no, it's good, it's a good...
I just reiterate what Mike said. We didn't add or subtract any offenses, but they're all on the books now. We just dealt with how they're dealt with, how they go through the system, how they're cited and so on. So, we didn't make litter an offense.
No, don't pick on litter. You know, the actions, it seemed like these are...
Well, I know, I understand what you're saying, but, and, you know, maybe our code does need drastic revision. That wasn't our mandate. I mean, that's not what we were about, and I'm sure that somebody would be happy to hear your suggestions anytime, but we just took the offenses that are already on the books and dealt with the way that they're handled.
I very must be expressing myself very badly, because what I'm really talking about is, it seems like there are a number of ordinances that are really not safety issues, or really not health issues, or really not life-threatening issues. And so, in the Purpose and Intent, it seemed like some address should be made to the quality of life issues.
I see what you're saying, I'm sorry. Is there sort of thing in there about Mike?
Yes. The Purpose and Intent also mentions the borough's Charter preamble of Bill of Rights, and that captures quality of life issues. If you read the, it's, if you go to the borough's website and just click on the Borough Code, first page, you'll get the line, go all the way down and it reads out, and that's where you capture some of those. There's local autonomy provisions, there's things about quality of life, and so that's where the quality of life is captured within. And I would also say that, you know, like, as Ron said, this is a living document, and just like all codes and all provisions. And so, as we go forward, as a committee, if there are concerns about specific issues, those need to be expressed. The Assembly is going to get this ordinance once this committee has made its recommendations, and at that point, the public will have meetings and they can express their comments and develop arguments for some of these individual items that the Assembly can also take a look at, too. So, you know, let's, definitely if you feel strongly, to attend those meetings and...
Bill?
Speaking of Purpose and Intent, what's the purpose of this meeting? What are we supposed to achieve right here and now? And if we achieve anything, what's going to be done with whatever we achieve today?
Well, the hope was that we'd get some feedback on what we're thinking of so far.
Is it being recorded?
Yes, it is. Every word. And we're going to, we're going to take this and finalize the package here to the Assembly and go through the next steps in the process from there. And we still have a few things to tidy up, but it's, yeah.
It's been mentioned a couple of times that no offenses have been added or removed. I was involved in a couple of the first Public Safety Committee meetings going over this and with the previous interim chief, and it was quite a few things that came up that were suggested to remove or combine. What's happened to that? Is it, recommendations go out the window?
Mike?
That's not what this ordinance is about. It's about the manner of handling the offenses that are there. If we were to, let's say, take out the offense, reference to the offense in minor, minor offense ordinances, it would still exist in the chapter where it's been for years. So, it was not, I understand why they did it, but it was just inappropriate to recommend that we remove offenses in this particular activity. We want to remove them, and there are some that probably shouldn't be. We should ask one of the committees of the Assembly, hey, look at this, we think it ought to be removed, and we could do it.
Well, that's what the discussion was.
Well, the formal recommendations we got from all the committees, including Public Safety, didn't include any specific violations that they thought should be removed. The official recommendations we got from Public Safety in November included some questions about different pieces and some suggestions about whether it should be handled by the police or staff and things like that, but it didn't include anything specific. And also, we noticed, even if we did start getting the specifics, this is where Chapter Ten especially, but also some things in Chapter Eight, even if we removed Chapter Ten or some things in Chapter Eight, anybody in the borough could still be cited for any of them because they're already in the state law. So, there was a discussion about whether you keep Chapter Ten in there so that you can cite under Borough Code also, knowing that even if we remove it, you could still be cited for it under state law at any time.
Well, that's some of what we went through.
Right.
So, it's, it's down to an exercise of utility.
I'm telling you, the recommendations we got from Public Safety didn't address specific violations as far as, I mean, I have the recommendations.
Yeah, I have to look at them, yeah, but they were a little bit unclear in...
Yeah, they raised questions that we addressed, and I've been over them with Jim Stanford since then a few times. And I sent him, you know, he's been up to date on this process, but he hasn't brought up any other specifics.
Mike, I'm imagining.
Well, no, I was on the same theme that I thought, I thought that pains, or the size of pains, that we had too many minor offenses, and that there would be some identification of the ones we don't like or the ones we don't want to enforce, and that those would come out. And it seems like it's not as clear, that can certainly easily be done in this kind of situation that...
Just the sheer, sheer numbers of it. Norm?
Yeah, I've got a question the mayor might ask with this chairman or the chairperson of the Borough Assembly, Ron, to show there. How should, how would they like the public to proceed on editing laws in Borough Code or maybe adding laws that are lacking or not, non-existent? Should we wait a few months and let this work through its process and then approach Assembly people, or do we need to write our own ordinances and petition the Assembly to have a hearing on those? Or how should we move forward on the specific point of the bigger picture of what would work best with? What do you think? I mean, because I don't want to derail this process with all this little stuff, well, this is big stuff, but, but, you know, I understand we need to get this passed, because right now you cannot enforce Harbor Code because of what happened in August when we reconsidered this later on. And so, we need code in the harbor, we need this to pass so we can enforce Borough Code. And, but as far as amending Borough Code or changing Borough Code or adding rules or getting red rules, how should I, how should the public approach this and give us great comfort in knowing how we should do this? Because we got lots to do, we got a budget to do, we got all kinds of things to do. I'm just wondering if someone has an answer for that.
Do you want to respond, since he directed that to you, Jen, or...
Well, we have...
You weren't the big hating hands up. We have a couple of hands up.
I think that there's going to be several answers, but I think that if these, if the concerns you're talking about now are ones that are not addressed in this minor offense ordinance, but are in current code or not, and you think they should be, you can bring that to our attention, let me tell you, want, but I'm hopeful that we can let this particular process continue moving forward, because we are moving forward with it now, and I think it's going to take some more tweaking, but if you, you know, if you have concerns about things that aren't being addressed, we need to know that, too, that they would not necessarily be a part of this process.
We can only do so much at once, and you know, it's, don't want to blow the train up, we want to get it moving and then do the next stop. Yeah, this is the way I see it. Okay, thanks.
So, both mics were raising their hand. Do you have any...
Yeah, and I think, Norm, your question is how does the public do that? I think through this process, the public, the public process worked here through the petitioning process. The power of petitioning is why we're here right now. And understanding what a petition is, petition can be 650 people or 600, however, or it can be one person. And it's just, if you don't, if you see something that you don't like, an individual item like littering or, you know, something in Public Safety, if you see something you don't like, as the mayor said, it just needs to be brought to their attention through, and all you have to do is state the concern that you have, you know, direct it to the Assembly, and then ask the Assembly how you would like to address, how you would like them to address that concern. And that is a legal, that's a First Amendment petition there. And then the Assembly may choose to bring it to one of the committees and then have them hash it out, and maybe some of these items can get removed once this process is done. So, the public wields a lot of power, and I think that's one of the things, is how do we do that? And that's, I think, one of the ways you can do it appropriately.
So, this is the start of a process, too. After we get this to the Assembly, there's two hearings that go from there and comments to be brought up that's supposed to be interjected, I think, too, until it's final or any final. Bill?
I feel that Julie did a wonderful job at the first Borough Assembly meeting that this minor offenses ordinance was brought up and did a fine job of pointing out that the minor offenses ordinances that are on the books, on the Borough Code, are a conglomeration of offenses that started somewhere around 1912. Some of them are a bit antiquated. The community has changed, the social and economic outlook of the community has changed, so that a lot of these things, these ordinances needed to be changed. I, like I said, was involved with Public Safety at the beginning of their work. I sat right next to Bob Griffin on the one meeting as we went through things that fit and didn't fit, things that were recommended to be removed, things that were recommended to be combined, and that's where I left it, because we were assured that this process was going to take care of clearing all that up. Now, we're here so many months later, and we're still at square one.
Mike?
Well, it was never the intention of any Assembly member that I know of to remove or add any offenses. We're just dealing with the fact that we deal with the offenses that are already on the books. I think Evelyn brought up, but the fact that there had been discussion about removing some specific thing, let's say it's speed, for example. We can do that, but not now, that's not part of this ordinance. She could ask me to do it, I will bring it up, whatever happens to be, to the Assembly, and the mayor may assign it to a committee, or we may not, decide not to do it. But that's the way it handles separate from this thing about minor offenses.
Paul?
Yes, we understand.
Thank you. My name is Paul Nelson. I'd like to thank the Assembly and the committee and everyone who's worked on this. And I guess my first question is, I'd like to know if I can get a copy of what's going to go to the Assembly. I know we're not quite done with it yet, but I'd like to see the revised thing before it goes to the Assembly, so I know, you know, what to take to the Assembly. Mike, I do still have quite a few concerns with this. I guess my biggest one is, we're drafting law that is going to affect the Haines Borough from now on. And I'm really questioning, I mean, Norm brought up some good points, we need to get this through, but I don't want to see us rush it through. I want to make sure that we've done the best we can to protect individual rights and maintain the law. Specifically, I'll try and be real brief. The daily fines issue, and I know I've already brought this up to the committee, the state of Alaska has repealed daily fines. Specifically, in the opinion from Robin Taylor, was that the state did not feel it was a way, a good way to deal with fines. And I think I've sent all of the committee members a copy of that. Another concern I have is the minor offenses violation, is it valid in the town site only, or does it encompass the entire borough? Another thing is, do the police get training on minor offenses? Or is this just going to be handed to them and say, here you go, here's the minor offenses? So, I guess it comes down to what are the orders and how do the police get alerted to this when it passes? And I guess the final thing is, you know, what, what is the rush? I believe we need to be very careful before we pass this law, because it's going to be a lot harder to change it. And it's just like Mike said, we're here because of the ready petition, and we're getting a lot done, and you've all done a great job with it. And I really appreciate what has been done to remove the unconstitutional violations that we're in, but I think we need more time before it's passed into Borough Law. Thank you very much.
Dan?
I'm confused by Mr. Nelson's statement as far as removing unconstitutional violations that were in my head. What was he removing?
If I can respond to that, it contains, it contained a bill of attainder, which pains Borough Code. The bill contains bill of attainders. A bill of attainder is any law that states that you are guilty upon violation. The Constitution of the United States states specifically that no bill of attainder shall be issued. For anyone that doesn't know what a bill of attainder is, it's any law that says you're guilty as soon as you do it. Everyone is entitled to due process. That's what... That's what was removed that was unconstitutional.
Thank you. Took that out.
Yeah, that was, it still needs to come out other places in Borough Code, but we got it out of minor offenses.
Ron?
Yes?
Answer Mr. Hughes's question. A lot of the tax stuff, we're not going to know anything about, so we would probably just give it, make one of the officers a code enforcement officer and just give him the special training. So all this, all the, you know, that kind of stuff, he would just handle all those tickets. It wouldn't be just whoever's on duty. Because I think that was, that's just going to overburden all the guys. There's one person. That's why most jurisdictions do it. They have one or two code enforcement officers based on the capital.
So he's focused on traffic and?
Well, I mean, he would, he would be doing his regular police duties, but then he would also be doing the stuff with the sales tax or any of the other things that we don't normally do. And that would answer Mr. Nelson's question. There's no further training that we need to enforce speeding. It's the same statute. It's just based on Alaska statute, so no further training that will be needed.
Dan?
Yes, I'd like to follow up on Paul Nelson's request to have a copy of the committee's recommendations to the Assembly to review before the Assembly takes action on it. Can that be arranged?
Yeah, we, we haven't defined a copy yet. We're not sending anything to the attorney until we get all our act together. We don't want him to work on things.
Right, when it's finished as far as, and you're ready to present it to the Assembly, will the public be able to review it first?
It will certainly be in the packet for that, which is coming out the week before, five days before the first Assembly meeting.
Yeah, it's a public, public document. It would be a public document.
So it'll be in the packet five days prior to the Assembly meeting?
It'll be in the Assembly packet. If we get it earlier, we can post it on the website, but we have minor offenses too.
You could, would you?
Sure. We will.
The current draft, the current draft is there right now with all of our recommendations through February. So, well.
It's on, it's on the website.
Through January. The most current draft with all of our recommendations through January is on our website right now.
Yep.
And then it has to be revised before it's sent to the Assembly, but then I can make sure that they post it on the website and then it's, it'll, yeah, it'll definitely be in the packet.
Try to compile recommendations in a package and just not every little recommendation to the attorney because it just would, the attorney would be working on our stuff all the time, so we package them and then send them.
We have three of you, Mike, and you.
Okay, I just wanted to point out that when the, anybody in the Assembly person or whatever receives a package of something like this and that particular ordinance is in it, it's likely to get passed the first night that the Assembly sees it. There'll be a public hearing, then there'll be another public hearing two weeks later. There might even be a third, but there'll be at least two. And then presumably it will be passed if it is referred to committee again.
Okay, I'm just, I'm a little bit confused. I know the committees did a lot of work and I think what you've done is really great. But I think that when the people signed this petition, the six hundred, they wanted to get rid of a lot of these, I heard about the jaywalking, the dogs and pit cops and, but from what you're saying, now we have to do another petition to, to close out again? Was that?
Well, Mike, as, as Mike stated, you know, we're just dealing with minor offenses. If we could, let's say we recommend it, take it out, well, it's like Mike stated, it's still, it's still, it would still be in Borough Code. And so the problem, as you see, it would still be in Borough Code. So, you know, we're just dealing with the minor offenses portion, not.
Wasn't it pages and pages of stuff that people didn't like and they thought it was too much and that was the reason people signed the petition? Yeah.
Right. Yeah, so you got it.
Let's see, you got Norm next, Karen, and then Mark.
I'm glad there's not Karen.
Okay. Okay, continue that since it's right on the stage.
Well, and I, I understand that frustrate, that's not the reason I signed the petition. I signed the petition because I thought it still needed public input and the way it was being presented, you know, people just felt like they weren't understanding everything and that we needed to work on it. So that's why I signed the petition. And yes, it is confusing, I agree, because what happens is all, most of the offenses in our Borough Code, many of them are also in state law. It doesn't, for jaywalking, it doesn't matter if we take it out, you can still be cited for jaywalking.
Four minutes?
Right, not jaywalking, but we've used jaywalking law, crossing without the, the lines. I mean, and it, not only, and that doesn't just mean that Trooper Neeson could cite you. The Borough Police can still cite on state statute even if it's not in Borough Code, right? Okay. So it, and it really wasn't, when we got the direction from the Assembly, it wasn't necessarily to look at each individual piece because that was the case. We're still dealing with state statute for individual minor violations. It was how do we process those violations if they happen and how do we deal with those violations within our Borough? And it was the process about the violations, not so much the individual violations. And I know it was confusing because I felt your confusion, but that's.
So what's really confusing, I think, is that we have Borough Code over here and it has all these violations, different ones, but some of them are not minor offenses, some are misdemeanors and so forth. So we're taking some of these out here and putting them in this minor offense box. And they still exist over here, but these will be treated when they're cited as minor offenses so the court can deal with them. But we're not changing Borough Code. We're, we're just defining which ones are minor instead of what they are now. Some are misdemeanors, you have jail terms and things like that. So the existence of two different things that kind of have the same wording is somewhat confusing. So, Norm?
Yes, Dan. Another question about the process for ordinance 1506-413. It's been introduced in August? Has it been introduced in August?
This was a minor offense ordinance?
Yes.
Um, yeah. Approximately, yeah.
So in two meetings, theoretically, if there's no hiccups, it could be, it could be enacted. Two public Borough Assembly meetings in this ordinance could, we could be done with that part of the ordinance and then work on other things.
Conceptually, yeah.
I'm just saying if there's no hiccups, it could move through. Because my point again is you've voided all harbor code and we cannot enforce enforcement in the small old harbor or the cruise ship dock or the Lutak dock or the Levikopdod without this code being passed. And we're just getting ready for the season and some people or harbor patrons or users of Borough facilities, they need rules, I'm sorry, and fines. Or it could be crap all over the docks and nets everywhere and, you know, because some people just, without the fine structure, you know, and I, I really urge Borough Assembly to move this through and, and then we can deal with that later and not get off the track. I mean, given it's due, but keep it moving along. It can't be reconsidered again, again and again. Because you, you voided code back in August and we've been without law for eight months. Thank you.
Karen, you still have?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if the committee members could kind of bound on separable offenses then, just because Mike kind of said that there were some elements that were problematic. And I think the lack of the definition about the increment of time that you can fine for each offense if it continues to be repeated is what cost us thousands of dollars recently. So I think that's something that really needs to be addressed and I don't know how you have addressed it.
Yeah, and, and that, that's been a theme at some of the meetings and, and it was discussed a little bit when we were at the end of the last meeting when it was kind of being brought up. Paul mentioned it and some of like, I'm just thinking of title or chapter eight in the minor offenses. It has to be each day or each violation and each day, usually a separable offense for all of these violations. Well, some of those violations are things like littering issues or something like that where you may want, you know, want to give someone time. That one may be better on a 15-day basis or there may be some in there that might be a 30-day basis. So to make, to say for all of these fines, one day may not be appropriate.
But you haven't decided that yet?
Yeah, no, yeah, I think that's, I, I can't, I can't speak for the committee, I don't want to speak for myself, but I think this is one of those areas that needs to be reviewed. There needs more consideration and, and also what Mr. Nelson is saying, you know, we need to look into those things. There's some elements in the unfinished business, that's one of them, that I believe needs to be, that needs some consideration.
Debbie, got something?
One of the things we talked about that regard over and over was whether you could have a continuing violation so that you issue a citation on day 10 and it goes back daily to two, three, four, five through nine. And I think one of the things that we pretty much are agreeing on is that if you're going to cite again, you have to actually write a citation. That there isn't any commonality of any violation.
Phil has a question.
I want to refer back to what Norm was just saying about not having law to govern the harbor on account of this ordinance being introduced in August. Earlier you pointed out that the book, the rules are still on the code, the Borough Code, and that's not changing. So the law is there to regulate the harbor and just do it the way it's been done for years. It's just not being changed. So he does have the rules to work with or not. Now, are we changing some and not others? What are we doing here?
And what I, what I, what I responded, was thinking when you said that is, well, we still have it in code. It's just you can't cite it under minor offense. You have to cite it under administrative.
But, right, but still be handled.
So my legal expert.
Can I dress as Owen? Yeah. The Borough Assembly amended the fee schedule when they approved the Borough approved harbor fee schedule and they removed all fines from Borough Code on the harbor fee schedule. We could write a ticket, but there are no fines.
They changed code?
In the harbor. Okay? The, the fines are not in Borough Code. They're in the, on the fee, Borough Assembly approved fee schedule. And the Borough Assembly, when we presented the fee schedule, they amended it because they're enacting this ordinance. They just did it all at once and then they reconsidered the ordinance. Ordinance didn't move forward and they never re-put the fines back in. So you can write a ticket at the harbor, but there can be no fines attached to violation of the harbor.
That's what we need to look at.
I'm just saying, once this passes, it's handled, but in the meantime, it's, it's just if you've got something going on there, the harbor staff can only talk to people, which they always do. The fines are the last thing and writing a ticket is the last thing you want to do, you know? But we don't have that big stick until this gets passed.
Okay, so that points out.
Yeah, that's, sure, that's just specific to Title 16 in the harbor, so.
See, really, you had your hand up first.
Just a minor preference here, preface, I mean. This, this is really about control and this, the people in power controlling all of us, that's why a lot, a lot of us responded, you know, for a whole lot of different reasons. We felt like this is too much in terms of control. And we all responded for different reasons. And then I also want to mention that the committee did decide to remove something contrary to what's been said. And skiing is the best example. And it'll be explained as, well, that applies to pedestrians. That's the same rule that applies to pedestrians. But, you know, it's a, it's a matter of degrees of change. In this regard though, one of the things that's very remarkable is there's nothing, there's something about guaranteeing rights, but there's nothing in this ordinance that protects us from the abuse of authority. What I mean specifically by that is we assert our right and we're told we have no right to assert our right because we are the law enforcement. We have no, no way of addressing that. And I, I think it should be written into the ordinance in a specific way that every citizen has the right to question reasonably, you know, in, in the right setting, the abuse of authority. And I don't want to get into the specifics of that. If somebody's curious about that. Then I have one more thing that I wanted to mention about this subservience to the state. There's a very strong doctrine in law that's been there for a couple, actually three centuries. It's called the undue burden principle or doctrine. And that's where the law is exacting requirements, in this case, a local entity, the borough. The state is exacting requirements which are undue burden. I would like to see the Assembly question some of these things that they keep saying, well, we, this could state tell us we have to do this. Thank you.
Josh, do you have?
I'll just, you have a vehicle for addressing any concerns. It's called court. So when you get the citation, look court at your vehicle. The other thing is, I haven't seen, I mean, everybody's worried about being overly policed or all these laws. I haven't seen anything like this since I've been here. This is one of the leniency communities I've ever lived in. So I don't see where all these, all these people are being hampered by all these laws. So I, I find it very distressing that people think that we are going to go out there, hopefully it's not just us, and we're going to just take your rights away just because we can. I'm not going to do that. No officer of the works for me is going to do that.
I, well, I have to respectfully disagree in the contention that there's no kind of mechanism for criticism or anything in the purpose and intent specifically. And we're governed and the borough and all of us are governed by the Constitution, both the United States and Alaska. But those provisions, specifically the First Amendment, is a powerful tool for criticism and the, the right to criticize your government and the right to, and the other provisions in the Bill of Rights with regard to the protections of, of all points in the adjudication process in the first, from the third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. So I have to respectfully disagree on that contention that there's, and, and we could draft a very lengthy statement, but by mentioning the Constitution, by the state of Alaska and the United States, that, that embraces that, that right to criticize. That is part of the, part of our constitutional rights to criticize and be handled properly by the state, by the federal government, by local government.
So put his down.
I just wanted to address the comment about over policing. I think that what we've done in this ordinance is ask the police department to do a lot more because we are worried that administrative enforcement is, can be arbitrary and so on. And so I think that we, we aren't concerned that our police officers have been over zzzzous and just probably overburdened them by what we've done.
And we're impartial objectives in enforcing.
Right.
I had, I had a range of questions.
No, it's fine.
So one thing I, I think I've learned in this last four months or so, we're, we're talking about ordinances, particularly ones that if you violate, you get a fine. And it's all about the person getting cited, a lot of it is. But there's another half to that and that's the person getting impacted by conducting that activity. And so if your neighbor is blaring a radio at three o'clock in the morning, they get cited, they can say they're a victim, but there's another victim out there, which is the person receiving that notice. So two sides to this. Every, every one of these ordinances has someone that's impacted besides the person getting a citation. That's a good one. It could be a community, it could be an individual. So it's not just all about the person, the person's rights that are being affected potentially by the citation. It's the whole community. around them, and how that affects that particular case, so. Anyway, off my soapbox. Pardon the yodel, said...
Yeah, and first, I want to thank all the committee members who served their important meetings, a lot of material that we went through, so thank you for that. Secondly, from the beginning, the committee has asked for the memo authorizing the expenditure of the attorney's fees for this document, and the intent of it, and that's never been brought forward, I think that's important information for the public, and what's the status of that? I know you addressed it at one of these.
What memo was that you're looking for?
The attorney had to be authorized with the purpose of writing this or that, and we found out, we, the public, found out about it last summer, and we were told in June 30th memo, that they'd been working on it for over a year, and then in committee it came out that they'd been working on it for three years, and it was inquired, when did this happen, how did this happen without public knowledge, and where's the memo authorizing the borough to spend, the borough knows on it.
So I don't know where that document is, but I knew there is a list of correspondence that's taken place.
Well, you sent some of those around today, the...
Yeah, two of those.
Yeah.
And can we make that historical information public by putting it on the website so that the public is...
Yeah, I asked Julie to put that on there, she just got it today, we're interested.
Okay, and the daily fines, I know that that's something that you're, the language that you're inseparable, I just want to encourage you, don't give up on that, make sure you work through that language before you turn this over. Title 8 definitions, I think it's real important we get the definitions filled out for this prior to leaving committee, so I asked you to persevere, to get some definitions going. Chapter 12 house numbers, one of the gas committees, that happened even before the original ordinance was passed, they painstakingly went through house numbers in chapter 12 about how the process of enforcement needed to go through. Bill, I think you were at that meeting, and it did come through, I saw that they made the recommendation, but I haven't, it's like it's been dropped at that point, so I asked you to go back to that gas committee, and you had that, because they spent a lot of time and effort, and they've made some common sense changes on that. And I also want to kind of refocus, why are we doing just minor offenses? What is the advantage? And what is happening is they're taking our infractions and they're putting it on the table, it's called the Uniform Minor Offense Table, and by putting it on the table, according to the borough's attorneys, or the acting borough attorney, Patrick Bunson, there was advantages to that. And the two main advantages were, it was expeditions, and streamlined enforcement, and the borough got to keep the money for it. I think those were the main fines that he was making. There's nothing that says that we have to have any borough infraction on Minor Offense Table, and we are taking an action toward, the safety committee did say, we don't want these infractions, we want to get rid of them. And you're saying, well, we can't do that with this document, and I would argue that yes, you can, you do have that within your authority, but the one thing you certainly don't need to do is to take the active action of adding infractions, the Public Safety Commission said that they wanted to get rid of, then add them to a Minor Offense Table. Why are we adding it to the Minor Offense Table if it's not about, if those were against the recommendation? And the minor, what's the purpose of Minor Offense Table? It's to streamline, make it expeditions, and then so that the borough can collect the money. And that's really the only reason why Title 10 and the other state infractions are listed in Borough Code under the Minor Offense, that's the advantage, is for collection of money for the borough. We have addressed that it will not be for policing for profit, which is a very important addition, but even the acting police chief stated in one meeting, well, the only reason to have it in Borough Code is so that you can collect the money, and, you know, we shouldn't do that, and then he came back at the next meeting and said, well, you know, I said that we didn't need to do that, but I really think it's better that Bill does have it in code so they can collect the money. When we're taking, when we're adopting state infractions and putting them on the Minor Offense Table, the only advantage is the collection of the revenue. And thanks for taking the time to go through that and addressing the other issues.
Mike, you had your hand up.
I was going to point out, maybe taking this a little bit backwards. Doing, setting up the Minor Offense Code as we are working on that, one of the reasons was never thought we could collect money, it was a result, but it was never to do it. He didn't say, you ought to do this so you can collect money. Didn't want anybody to get to that point. I want to go back to what you said about what was the original impetus for the attorney to work on this, and it almost certainly was a former, that's how, almost everything is, when it's a minor nature, and sometimes even a major nature. Looked like Mark Curtis must have called up, asking him to say, hey, look, I've heard about this new minor offense law, would you look into it, see how it applies to us? Or maybe he called me in the other morning, but the chances of it being a purchase order or a lateral authorization are kind of small. Could be wrong.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I've appreciated Brenda's help through all this committee work and process, and all the information and feedback. Just two things, though, I wouldn't, in my point of view, when the State Supreme Court passed the new court rules to establish the Uniform Table, in their, in their decision, not their decision, but in their, in their document that they issued, they said it wasn't, it was for transparency. They focused on why this would make it easier for citizens, is because otherwise, without a table scattered throughout codes, and local law, and local municipal law, and state law, and when I read that the court's reasoning for creating the Uniform Table was for the people, so that there was a more transparent, easy to understand way of looking at what constitutes a minor offense. And also, I know that Chapter 10 question relied a lot on, well, is it mean that we collect fines locally, or the fines go to the state? But I would also argue that by keeping some of those local offenses on the local minor offense level, that means that in order for the borough police here to enforce them locally, if they want to collect the fines, they also have to subscribe to the purpose of intent, which is to not generate, not to enforce to generate revenue. So I also, I almost think that keeping them local in Chapter 10, I've given the spot, helps, protects us even more for the reasoning of getting issued those minor offenses under Borough Code. You know, Sergeant Dryden has a choice when he, right, if he chooses to write a citation after he's talked to the person, after he's given a warning, and if he still chooses to write a citation after all of that, because he decides that it's the only way to enforce a minor offense, he gets to check on the top if it's one of these that also aligns with state law, whether the borough gets the money for the fine, or the state gets the money. But if he marks that the borough gets the money for the fine, he also has to be writing that citation under the consideration of our codes and intent in our code, and that he can't be doing it to generate revenue, he should be issuing a warning first, and that he should take all those things into consideration. So like Deb says, it almost adds, it adds a little bit of work to the police, but it's also what we've been trying to do to address the committee concerns, I think, so.
Bill?
May I can help clarify a little bit? First, Chief, nobody that I know of is complaining that you're over policing.
Good.
What our concern, what our concern was, and I believe Deb, or Brenda's the one that did the digging out of the facts early on in this discussion, is that Haines' list of minor offenses is either the second or third longest list in the state. Is that what it worked out to? So that goes back to what I said previously, was the Julies did such a fine job of pointing out that this is a collection of minor ordinances from something like 1913. So over that time, it certainly needed cleaning up, and with this whole change of going from administratively handling the offenses to take them to the court, we have this sudden bundle, and that's why everybody's upset. So contrary to what Mike has said, the people who were complaining, were complaining about this massive pile, and this pile needs to be cleaned up either at the same time as going ahead with this ordinance, or prior to this ordinance being passed. And yes, it's a lot of work, that's one of the things that was brought out, is going through the code and clarifying each one of these things, and have to go to assembly meeting, that this, this, this needs to be eliminated, and so, yes, it's an awful lot of work. But that's what we hired you for, Ron.
You're not paying enough.
Well...
Mike?
Yeah, I agree with Bill on that. The people who signed this petition thought there was an opportunity, by signing that, to get rid of some ulterior laws, or some stuff that wasn't even, you know, really important to most people and so on.
That didn't hurt him too bad, I agree with that.
And I think we should do that, but somebody's got to decide what ones they don't like, you know? Is it going to be me, am I going to say, I don't think there should be laws about dog barking? Probably not. Some citizen ought to come to me, or to one other assembly person, and do it. Because if I do it on my own, they'll say, oh, you forgot this, or forgot that. We want to hear from the people, what they would like to eliminate, and then you'll take it on.
That's what committees did.
I understand, I mean, I looked at that list when I first saw it, oh my gosh. I understand the reaction, that Jesus, a lot of times you can run this down. But I'm going to suggest again that we think about having a code provision commission that is a sort of standing committee that takes on title by title, the provisions are code, and goes over and makes those recommendations, because I think when we became a consolidated borough, and we took stuff from the cities that I was parent of, and just imagined that it went into a lender, and all of that, in the code book, and I'm sure there are provisions that we all need, but I don't think that was our mandate to look at those things, I just think they should be looked at.
I know it's funny you hear about traffic light, I agree, we have any traffic lights.
Is this on the agenda for the next Borough Assembly meeting, or the...
No.
Okay, so is the committee, the standing committee, are they going to work on those definitions they mentioned a few times tonight? Is there a list of words they need to work up definitions? Because that seems to be the only hang-up point for the, for this ordinance to move forward, is one of the strong recommendations is they need these definitions, and you can't move this ordinance forward without those definitions, and that's going to take, I don't know if it takes a public meeting, or what, or they just make a recommendation, but someone has to decide what words need a definition and come up with a definition. Is the committee going to be tasked with that, or you have to do a dance for the assembly and ask for their permission?
Well, we talked about that, particularly in light of Title 8, where they are a little vague in some places, but as I recall, we said, we'll create the space for definitions, and as we get into farther on in this, when things come up that aren't real clear, we'll have the definition as it fits. Margaret?
Well, yeah, and I just wanted to reiterate, that recommendation hasn't been finalized by the committee, I don't believe we need definitions.
You believe that ordinance can move forward without the definitions at this time?
Yes, absolutely, because our deadline, we're, according to the motion that was made on the call, this ordinance needs to come before the assembly, no later than the 26th of April, at that meeting.
And the next meeting is the 16th?
The next meeting is the 12th.
12th?
The second meeting in April is when it's supposed to come back before, unless the assembly next Tuesday says, we'll delay that, or we'll extend it, or, we were working, I believe the committee is working with the assumption that after tonight, we put all the ducks in the row that we have, get it to the attorney, so that it comes up at the April 26th meeting for the first introduction, whatever, since it's already on the table, I'm not sure how it works. But there are pieces that may not be resolved by the time it goes there, like the definitions, and if the assembly then says, we want the committee to go back and look at that some more during this whole process, we could do that, if the assembly wants to take it on, if the attorney decides that he can help with that process, you know, so there's, I believe the intention is to get it before the assembly on April 26th, with some of these unfinished business pieces left for the assembly to either direct the committee to keep working on them, or the assembly will take them on, or whatever.
So there's not a plan to enact the ordinance? There's not a plan to enact the ordinance in a timely manner, in my opinion, that if you're not going to present something that can be passed?
Well, we are.
It could be passed, it could be passed the way it is without the definitions, the definitions could be added later, it can be enacted the way we have it drafted right now, if the assembly chooses to do so. I mean, you make a valid point, the unfinished business pieces doesn't affect whether the assembly passes it or not, they're just more recommendations that the committee hasn't been able to finish, because we're out of time, with the deadline given.
And we need to get that to the clerk by the 5th, wasn't it?
Yeah.
We have to meet the packet deadline for that meeting and all this, so, you know...
So you've got six days to come up with definitions if you choose.
And if we have a meeting, we have to have public notice in time, so you see, we are windows.
And get it back from the attorney, too.
Yeah, so these are, the borough staff could create definitions and put them in them without a public process. I mean, I've just, I've just, it doesn't have to stall for the next month because we can't come up with a fee.
I personally don't see it stalling, I don't see it stalling.
Okay.
So, let's see.
We'll wait.
Let's see, I can't wait for quite a minute.
I just wonder if there's any space in the ordinance, or especially regarding this definition thing, for pictures, or for stories, like, this is a messy yard, this is a public health issue. I mean, because getting that in words is pretty hard to do, and so I don't know if there's ever been visuals, or any space, this happened, and in that case, that happened, and that person's been, and that person, but I'm just, could there be something other than this word definition?
Sounds like more of a policy or a trading manual.
Ron, it seems that Mr. Hughes' concern about the lack of enforcement ability of the harbor could be addressed. Deb, am I incorrect on some side of basis by the assembly, by reenacting on a temporary basis the fees for the harbor, so that could move forward in the event? Am I wrong?
You're right.
If, if, I don't know the technicals of what he's speaking about, but if that is the case, and there are no fines, then that's a change in code, so that has to follow the process of a change in code.
But there were, if there was a schedule of fines there, could that schedule of fines not be reinstated?
I, I, I don't know the status of that, but if it was, if it's been taken out, then if it's a change in code, it has to go back through the public process.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
So what, one thing we're bringing out is, I think we need to lay out a tight line
here, because for the next couple of months, because not only after the assembly approves it, it goes to the attorney who presents it, and then has to state court, and they have to publish it, and then they can enforce it under that, so.
Right.
Okay, I just have a question, I mean, these definitions, I don't know, I just think it seems like it's such an arduous task, and can't you just Google it, or steal it from somebody else's code? It seems like we're recreating the wheel.
Well, as Deborah says, there's a lot of legal precedent, it probably frames every little word.
Can't imagine, take that one.
Bill, and Brenda?
I think the lady's idea of reinstating those fines for the harbor is a method that might work, because I don't believe that this should be shoved through and cause the amount of public discontent that it's already caused and will cause again, to have one section be the reason to force it through. I just don't think that's good policy, you have too much other stuff that's involved.
So we have eight minutes left here.
And what defines in Title 16, there's nothing preventing the harbor staff from noticing a violation and contacting the police department to cite that violation, even though there's
to cite that violation, even though there's no fine. They could cite a violation, and it would act like a warning at this point. I mean, that's a, that's a.
Well, if that's good enough.
And, and it would act like a warning. There's nothing that says that that can't happen.
Well, that could happen, but in order to have the incentive to make it stick.
I, I understand what you're saying.
I'm trying to help by finding a way to make this work rather than have one section be what brings the whole rest of it down.
Okay, so let's wrap this up with maybe Brenda's last one.
And another thing I've got to mention is that this ordinance specifically allows a penalty which may be collected in civil action whether or not the violation is cited, whether or not the violation is cited as minor offense at a couple of places in here. I really think that needs to be addressed.
And that was mentioned in his line. Yeah, and that's capable. Well, thank you all for coming. This has been a good, good discussion. Yep?
I would really like to thank Ron for helping take it out.
Oh, yeah.